...the road tax proposal fifteen dash one. Can we see that? And secondly, we're going to be discussing our local proposal, which is sale of spirits and mixed spirit drinks for consumption on premises. Before we do that, I have to introduce a few people. And I want to start with our esteemed mayor, Marion McClellan. I want to introduce our state representative, Robert Wittenberg. Our director of community and economic development, Kim Maroney, is here. Sandra Montez, am I saying that right, from MDOT, is here. We have Sharon Martin from the Liquor Control Commission. Our director of public safety is trying to hide in the back there. He's a little shy, but there he is. Steve Cooper. Our city clerk, Ed Norris, is in the back. We have a few guests. The executive director of the Eight Mile Boulevard Association, Jordan Towery, is in the back there. Our assistant city manager, Kevin Yee. Our assistant to the city manager, Crystal McLean. Our recreation director, Julie Hall. And Jocelyn Davis, our communications director. Thank you. And for those of you that have no idea who I am, I'm the city manager of the city of Oak Park, Eric Tungate. Thank you. Thanks. Too kind. Too kind. We're going to start with the road proposal. And so I would ask, we're going to go through a very brief presentations for both of these issues, and then I would ask for questions. There is a microphone in the back, so if you would like to speak, please head to the back. And if there's a line, wait in line. We're going to start with the road tax proposal. And I would ask Sandra and our state representative to join me here and give our presentation.
We'll wait for that one. Thank you. And then also, I don't know if we mentioned, but Mike McGinnis, who's here from Congresswoman Lawrence's office. So happy to have you here as well. So my name is Robert Wittenberg. I am the representative here for Oak Park and also represent six other surrounding communities, including Royal Oak Township, Huntington Woods, Berkeley, Ferndale, Hazel Park, Pleasant Ridge. Guess I could go through all of them. But so, and I live here in Oak Park. So the proposal, May 5th. I'm sure some of you have heard about it. I assume that's why you are here. You've probably heard a few things about it, but it's a pretty comprehensive plan. It's a, there are a lot of moving parts. There's a lot that goes into it. Actually, I think it's, the number is 11 different bills that will be enacted if this passes. So I'll give kind of a brief background. And then I'll let you speak from MDOT and we'll just give factual information. And then I can also answer any questions. And I'll probably elaborate on some of the issues that you go over. So our roads here in Michigan, they're pretty bad. I would think that everyone would agree on that. I think that is something that there's acknowledgement of that on both sides of the aisle. I think everyone knows that we have terrible roads here. We are 50th as far as per capita investment in infrastructure here in the state of Michigan. And we haven't had a gas tax increase in the last 20 years. So there hasn't been a lot of investment in our infrastructure and our roads here in Michigan. So this is something that needed to be addressed, and we all knew that it needed to be addressed. And just a point of clarification, I started in January. I was elected and started in January. And this was what happened in December. This happened last year to push this onto the ballot. That's a whole nother issue as far as putting it back onto the voters instead of making the decision in the legislature. But this is what we have in front of us. So we knew we needed to do something to fix our roads. And currently at the pump, you are paying a gas tax and you're also paying sales tax. And it's a 6% sales tax that you're paying. And one thing that everyone said is that they feel like when you're paying taxes at the pump, everything you pay there should go towards transportation. And so that's why they said to take off the sales tax from the price of gas at the pump. So they took that 6% off of the gas, the price of the gas. But when you do that, obviously, people are purchasing gas in large quantities throughout the state throughout the year. And that money goes towards our school aid fund. It goes towards our local municipalities with revenue sharing, and it goes to our general fund. So when that is taken off the pump, it's roughly, and you might have specific numbers, but roughly $800 million that we lose that would normally go, again, to our public schools. That will go to our local communities. So we had to figure out a way to backfill, to make sure we made those entities whole. And the increase in the sales tax is the plan that they came up with. They're going to increase the wholesale tax on gas and on diesel. And that money that's there will go towards the roads and public transportation. Some's built in, and you can speak more on that. But again, we needed to fill that, you know, the money that's going to be missing from our local communities and our schools. So it was a one cent increase. It would increase the sales tax from 6% to 7%. And with that money, there are also a lot of other things that are built into the proposal that are things that I personally am a fan of. Sorry, this thing seems to be moving on me. That I'm personally a fan of. Again, there's the money to fix our roads. And then we're going to have money that will go towards our public schools, money that will go back to our local communities, which have been struggling quite a bit over the last, it's, you know, I think $6 billion or so over the last 10 years has been diverted away from local communities. So that's money for public safety, money for local roads, money for essential services. So our cities have been struggling, and here in Oak Park, with the leadership of our mayor and our council and our city manager and everyone you see here, they've done a wonderful job of continuing to move Oak Park forward and do wonderful things for the city. And that's the second proposal. That's another idea that we can get into after. But that's another thing that's going to help as well. But so our cities have been struggling. So this was a way to get money back to our schools, back to our communities. There's also money for public transportation, which personally, I think, is essential in metro Detroit for sure and here in the state. I mean, we're one of the only major metropolitan areas that has no form of public transportation from our airport to our main downtown or any other area for that matter. And then also, most of you are probably familiar with the gentleman who was living in Detroit and working way out in Rochester, I think, and what he had to go through in his struggle to get to work. And he's not alone. There are other people who are dealing with that same situation. And so public transportation is essential as well. So those are some things that are built in. Also, money for the earned income tax credit. And this will restore the earned income tax credit to the level prior to 2011. And this is something that will actually help our lower-income families, working families, and actually will offset. There was a study done by the Michigan League for Public Policy, Gilda Jacobs, who's our former state rep and state senator, who's the head of that nonpartisan organization. But they advocate on behalf of low-income families and working-class families. And based on the numbers that they ran, this will actually help. They will come up ahead. Some of our lower-income families will come out ahead based on what will happen if this proposal goes through. So you have all that built in. Additionally, warranties. Will the contractors that work on the road have to guarantee their work on the road? Otherwise, it's incumbent upon them to pay to fix the roads. The truck weight on the weight limits here in the state of Michigan, we have one of the highest, if not the highest. And again, that's something you can speak to. But one of the highest in the country. We were grandfathered in when they passed funding, or weight limits around the country. We were grandfathered in. We had a weight limit in place. So we do have one of the highest in the country. And while we're not lowering the weight limit, we are increasing fees for trucks over 26,000 pounds as they drive on our roads here. So that money will also, you know, come in to help offset everything. Let me see. Like I said, there are a lot of things built in. One other thing, currently with our school aid fund, K through 12 education, you would assume that with a school aid fund, all the money would go for K through 12. But currently, some of our higher education can actually raid and get money out of that fund. There is a, you know, part of this, it'll, specifically in the Constitution, it'll make sure that only K through 12 and some tech schools will be able to use the school aid fund. So a lot of really good things that are built into this. I understand that the sales tax is a regressive tax. And I'm not a fan of a sales tax. But everything that's built in and all of these concessions that were made by the Republicans to work with the Democrats to build in all of these things make this a good option. Additionally, if this does not pass, then the alternatives are either nonexistent or are bad. Some of the alternatives that we've heard would take money from our local communities, from our school aid fund, from the Department of Community Health, all things that absolutely need their funding. And we want to give more funding to rather than taking away. And that's where some of the proposed money would come from to fix our roads. So not something that I would ever agree to, unfortunately. But we have a chance. It's in our hands to actually vote for something that's going to fix our roads and help our communities, help our schools, help some of our lower-income families. And I don't think I mentioned this. The sales tax does not affect your prescription drugs, your groceries, or your rent or mortgage. So those are things that are not impacted by the sales tax. So kind of long-winded, but I just wanted to get my thoughts out there. Sandy from MDOT will talk about the specifics and probably give some more concrete numbers as to what I alluded to. And then we can both answer any questions that you have. So with that, I'll let Sandy speak, and then I'll come back up here once again.
So you really hit most of the highlights. There's a few other things that are going to be done with this bill. There's a requirement that contracting is done on a competitive bid basis, and that's even at the local agency level. Anything over $100,000 will have to be competitively bid. You mentioned warranties. MDOT right now does have warranties on our concrete and our bituminous paving, but locals do not. This bill requires that all local agencies would also have to have warranties on their pavement. And the length of the warranty depends on the type of the work. Our longest warranties right now are on new concrete pavement. Those are five-year warranties. And on, for instance, a bituminous and asphalt overlay, those are a little bit less period of time. There's also a requirement that there be performance-based contracting with our maintenance agencies. So instead of just paying them for the time and material that they would get for doing work on our system, they basically, like in this area, the Road Commission for Oakland County, they do our maintenance on the MDOT trunk line. We pay them for whatever time, material, and equipment they use. This performance base actually looks at setting some standards and saying, this is the outcomes that we expect to get. And if they don't achieve those outcomes, then there's penalties with the, so it's not just basically pay for whatever services they provide. So there's, they do strengthen some of that. Those are, you kind of hit all the highlights of the bill. The biggest change, as you point out, is the fact that, and this is what MDOT has kind of been focusing on, all of the money that's collected at the pump goes to transportation. That is not the case right now. All the sales tax right now, which is really actually the highest, at $4 a gallon of gas, that's the highest percentage of tax on a gallon of gasoline. That does not go to roads at all. And as fuel consumption has dropped because of more economically fuel-efficient vehicles, our revenues have actually dropped pretty substantially. So the sales tax piece might not have dropped, but what we have been collecting has dropped. It's not a percentage-based tax. It's a flat tax. So our revenues have been declining for the last, really since 1997, the last time we had a tax increase. And it's evidenced by the condition of the roads the last two years, especially with the very, very harsh winters we've had have just really, really taken a toll on the system. And I'm an engineer. I'm not a finance person. My whole career has been spent on the engineering side. And I can tell you that the condition of the roads is something that, as engineers who are passionate about the roads, it's just difficult for us. It's difficult to know and drive around that we don't have the funding we need to be able to address the condition. And I probably get 10 calls a day on people complaining. And I understand, they're upset. They've blown out a tire. And it's happened to me, actually. It happened to me on a cold winter night. Hit a dark stretch of road in a big pothole, and we didn't see it. And then we were, and I, you know, I'm in the business, and I'm just, $600 later, you know. And I think that's another point of the message is that we're paying for this already. Most people that you talk to have had some work on their vehicle due to the damage that's caused by the bad roads. So I'm not here to advocate or to say that this is the right bill. This is the bill that's before us. I'm just here to tell you that our, from MDOT's perspective, right now, our funding situation is pretty dire, and it's going to continue to get worse. And the graphs and the data that we collect and the condition of the system is declining. There's no question. When we go out and do the ratings every year, we're slipping from, you know, most of our roads being in good condition to fair. Now we're, the majority of roads are in poor condition. So as you mentioned, MDOT per, or not MDOT, but the state of Michigan, per person spends the least on our transportation out of all 50 states. And we're, you know, we're the motor capital of the world. It's, we produce these great cars, but then you've got to take them out on the terrible roads. It's just, it's challenging. So. You know what? You covered most of the highlights of the part. I mean, I could run through it, but to be honest, you pretty much really hit most of it. If you want to just go through it.
Yeah, maybe we'll just kind of look through it just to see. So yeah, this is what we talked about. Removing the sales tax and then having the gas tax. Here's the 26,000 pound weight maximum, or not maximum, but your fees if you are over that. So this is just so you guys can see this. I guess, I've done this so many times that I've absorbed some of the information that you've said. So that's a good thing. So yeah, for school aid funding, revenue sharing, general fund, DNR marinas, okay? Community college eligible for, so community college, that's as high as it goes. It's high school, or it's K through 12, some community college and tech schools. 6% to 7% for the tax. It goes from 19 cents, and I think it's actually roughly, is it 18.7 exactly? Or is it exactly 19 currently?
Yeah, I believe it's 18.7.
I think it's 18.7 is where it's at currently. And it'll go up to 41 cents per gallon. The earned income tax credit, we spoke about that. Registration fees for new cars, we didn't actually get on that. So I don't know if that's something you can speak on, how the registration usually goes down every three years. So if you want to cover.
Yeah. My understanding of this, again, I'm not a finance person, but what I'm, the way it was explained to us is that right now, when you buy a new vehicle, there's a reduction for the first several years. This basically eliminates that. So the 30% registration fee increase on new cars after 2018. So there will be a little bit of an increase on new cars.
Or, well, there won't be the decrease.
There won't be the decrease.
There won't be the decrease anymore.
Right, correct.
So let's see here. See if there's anything else. So warranties, we talked about the warranties, which is great. Competitive bidding, that is something I forgot to mention, but you did mention, so that's great as well. Maintenance contracted by, okay. And it's based on this. And again, this would take effect October 1st. If it goes through, it takes effect the fiscal year, which is October 1st. You alluded to this as well. Roughly, I think it's, they say 300, and again, I don't know the exact number. Roughly 380, somewhere near $400 is how much a person typically spends here in Michigan for repairs they need to do on their car based on the condition of our roads. So if you've spent up to that $400, you're right about in that average. If you haven't, then you can look around to the person next to you, and they probably subsidize that a little bit. But it's costing people a lot of money to fix their cars based on how bad these roads are. And you alluded to this as well. The most recent thing that I saw, when they rate the roads from good, fair, poor, only 19% of the roads here in Michigan are good. The rest are fair to poor. So that's a pretty terrible number. And that's something we really, really, really need to make the investment in our infrastructure for our roads. And so this is a proposal to do just that. So I don't know if you want to add anything. And then we're also, if you do have questions, please go to the microphone. Also, I'm going to give my information, and this will be for all of you here, anyone at home watching. If you have additional questions and think of them later or you're too shy to ask them now, please reach out to me anytime, whatever you need. Always happy to help. Phone number at my office, toll-free, 855-REP-WIT. That's easy enough. W-I-T-T. And then the number itself is 517-373-0478. And my email is robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. So Eric, I'll let you if you want to jump in.
I want to thank both of you. And if you would prefer to write your questions and submit them, you can submit them to one of my staff over here, and they'll make sure that we're asking them. So with all of that said, are there questions? Take it away. We've got a whole notebook full of stuff there. Okay.
My name is Lana, is this on? Lana Sherman. I'm a resident of Oak Park. Unfortunately, I hate to criticize, but the presentation from the last town hall meeting was way better than this one. I think there's going to be a lot more questions because a lot of things were not covered. So my first question is, where does the money come from for all the mailings regarding proposal one?
Those all come from a campaign. So there's an organization that files a committee or a ballot, for any kind of ballot measure. They come together and they fundraise. It's private money. It has nothing, none of that money comes from the state of Michigan.
Okay, that's good to know.
So that's not taxpayer money. That is private funds.
Okay. And I know this was brought up last time, but for people who weren't here before, the big question is, why so many things? You know, you called it comprehensive for proposal one. Some people may want to agree for an increase for the roads solely and not for other things. Why would they lump everything together? It's like a trick photography. They're sticking all this stuff into one proposal where people just, the average person can't understand this proposal at all. Therefore, that's why it keeps failing.
Well, I understand your frustration, and I agree that it is. It is kind of confusing. And that's why we're trying to educate people and do these town halls. It has not been, obviously, it's not till May 5th, so we know it has not failed yet. You know, and I don't always trust the polling data because it's not always correct. I mentioned it a little bit. I tried to give a little bit of the backstory, but I can give more specifics. There were two proposals last time, last session. There was a proposal that was agreed upon by the governor, the Republicans in the Senate, the Democrats in the Senate, and the Democrats in the House. All of them had one proposal in mind that would have addressed this legislatively. It wouldn't have been punted back to the voters. It would have been taken care of. Unfortunately, the Speaker of the House at the time, Jace Bolger, didn't agree with it and had a different plan in mind. And his plan actually would have taken the money away from our local municipalities, taken money away from our schools, and with no promise and no way to return that funding. And so somehow, he, you know, I guess he did really well in the negotiation and didn't vote and said he wouldn't vote for a tax increase, but shifted it back to the voters. And so when they sat down in the negotiation, if they're going to increase the sales tax, which then has to go, because you're amending the Constitution, it has to go to the voters to vote on that, while they're in the, while they're there and making changes, there are some other things that they can change. And it's kind of like, this was like kind of a, and I've heard this expression before, it was a hairball that was kind of like this, and they're trying to pull everything apart and actually make this so it's not as confusing. And so all these things that are built in are, this was bipartisan. This was work that the Democrats, they said that if this is going to go through, there are some things that we need. There's some things that have to be built in. The earned income tax credit, funding for our public schools, funding for public transportation, which are all things that the Democrats fought for. So this had to be a bipartisan effort in order for there to be enough votes for this to go to the ballot.
Right. And I just wanted to clarify that you mentioned that there's no sales tax on what I call consumables, which is the medication and the groceries. So you stating that this is not going to change that tax, that there's no tax on already, is kind of misleading.
How so?
It's telling people, when I go to buy my prescription, I'm not going to pay this additional sales tax when there's no sales tax on it in the first place.
That's just what I was saying. I was just letting people know that the sales tax increase, the sales tax doesn't, isn't applied to those things. So I wasn't saying that, you know, I mean, it's zero on there anyway.
Right. I think you should just reword it because it's trying, it sounds like you're trying to make it sound like to the average consumer that you're not going to pay additional sales tax on your medication and your groceries, which is really important to the people in our city because most of the time, people can't even afford those two things. So I think that when you explain it, you need to clarify that the sales tax isn't an addition because there is no sales tax. It just doesn't affect it.
Correct. Thank, yes, thank you for that clarification. I apologize. There is no sales tax on food. There is no sales tax on prescription drugs. And there is no sales tax on your rent or mortgage. Yep, yep. So, yep.
Okay. So I have one more thing.
Sure.
I don't understand why we can't change, and I got this information from the first town hall meeting. We didn't really get it this time. Why can't we change the axle weight limits to be lower so that these big trucks can't come through our city and tear up our roads? Wouldn't that be an easier fix than to raise all this money to fix our roads?
That was, and that was something, that was a question last time, I do remember. And he asked that. So if you don't mind.
Sure. The axle weight.
The microphone, please, because I can hear at home.
Although Michigan does allow heavier overall vehicles, the number of axles that that weight is distributed over makes us no higher per axle than all of the surrounding states. So it's the axle weight that actually is the effective weight on the roads. And right now, Michigan, the way our weight is distributed across those axles, we are not allowing, I mean, even though the overall truck vehicle is heavier, the per axle weight is not, so the overall effect is not any worse, even though the trucks may be larger. So if that's what you mean by your question, the overall per axle weight is not any heavier than any other surrounding state. And again, you had mentioned those weights were, are grandfathered in for the total, you know, a lot of these decisions were made back years and years ago. Part of it's the automotive industry that needs the larger vehicles. But the effect on the roads is no different because the axle weight itself is not any heavier than the surrounding states.
And I just want to say, even though I sounded negative, I think these town hall meetings are great. We should have them every time before an election so that people can be informed and know what they're going to vote for or what they're going to vote against. This is very informative.
We appreciate your positivity. So thank you.
Thank you. And that's something here, let me jump. And that's something, you know, doing this in collaboration, and like I said, the elected officials and all the people that work here in the city of Oak Park, like I said, they've done a wonderful job here, and it was really easy to collaborate with them to do this. So moving forward, absolutely, this is something I agree, that we can educate the voters and the residents on everything that's going to be voted on. So thank you.
Okay.
Steve Gold, I'm a longtime resident of Oak Park. I am not playing words with friends. I just took a couple of notes. First of all, I have cats. First of all, I have cats. They produce hairballs. My cats would be very unhappy seeing it compared to some of the stuff that's going on here. Right. Second of all, let's talk about the roads right today. Would reducing axle rates fix the existing potholes?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I got to get Jen the mic when you answer because this is being held as long.
No, no. Changing the axle weights today would not fix any roads.
Okay, thank you. Next question. We talk a lot about, I talked to a lot of people about this proposal, so some of these questions sort of are things that I've heard. We've talked a lot about MDOT. You know, you are a representative of MDOT. But many of the roads which are severely deteriorating are county responsibility or city.
Correct.
So, just to clarify, the money, any additional funding will not go only to MDOT. Is that correct?
All the money will go through the same formula that it goes right now, which is MDOT gets thirty-nine point one percent. The road commissions get thirty-nine point one percent, and the rest go to locals. That distribution of funds does not change.
So, let me, let me just elaborate. I think the Assistant City Manager, I think we're, if this passes, we're thinking, what, a million additional per the formula? Okay, local road funding would be a million additional or so.
Okay. A question, a couple people got really upset when I was talking to them about this. My understanding from the last town hall meeting was that if this proposal passes, many of the initial funds, the revenue, will go to pay down debt and bonds and from the road commission, from MDOT. And then, basically, the money will get reborrowed at a lower rate. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Well, I can, I can address the fact that I don't know if there will be more bonding. But you are correct that the bill does require that the existing bonding be lowered. I'm not in finance at MDOT, so I don't know, I can't answer for what their plans are. I can just tell you that that was a requirement of the bill, that their, that the present bonding, the debt obligation be paid down for the first two years and then we, and then the funding is normalized at year two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. Lastly, since we have our Director of Economic Development here, this question is sort of addressed to her. We have a golden opportunity for economic development in Oak Park here. We could have all sorts of new tire and wheel dealers and suspension repair shops. So, what do we want? New repair businesses or better roads?
Better roads.
Good evening to everybody. My name is Aaron Vardeman. I'm a school bus driver for Oak Park District.
Good evening.
So, my heart is into this thing as well. I just have two questions. I kept looking at the proposal and maybe you ought to straighten it out. I see you had recreation, conservation, twenty million for that. Is that inclined, is that, is that mean additional money for parks and recreation in the state or how would that be dispersed? I saw the language and I was just wondering.
Do you want to take that one? Is it marinas? Is that?
Marinas and RV parks. ORV.
Yeah.
Marinas and RV parks.
Okay. Because when you saw it, it just said recreation, conservation, and you cut it off.
So, are we saying state marinas, you know, state-owned operated marinas? Is that what we're saying, obviously? Is it in here?
I don't know that for sure, so I don't want to give you improper.
On the last presentation last time, it said twenty million per year more for DNR marinas, ORV trails.
Correct. That's exactly what I have in my, it was probably the same presentation.
It was, it was the same presentation, so.
Twenty million more per year for DNR marinas, ORV, which is off-ROV.
So, there it is. The one, two, three, fourth down.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so you are correct. It is twenty million more per year for DRV, DNR marinas, ORV trails. And I can't really speak to why that was included as part of the package, but obviously, someone felt strongly that those areas needed the money.
We can get some more additional money for parks and recs, you know. I just wanted to be correct with that, hit right there, but maybe you should straighten it out.
Yeah, and that's, parks and rec locally would be different. That would be money that our local communities, if, with revenue sharing, money that comes here, that could be used for whatever they, you know, whatever they want. And that's one of the, one of the options.
Okay. The only other question I have, State Rep., is that I notice, not pointing you out, but I notice a lot of legislators on this particular issue have come out yay or nay. And I think people are sort of confusing when they don't see the legislators taking the leadership role on this particular proposal. Either you're for it or you're against it. And a lot of people, you know, might be on the fence, but they don't see the people that they elected to district not taking a stand on it, which by having the fact of the vote. Now, I'm not a genius, I'm just using my own sense.
I appreciate that. And I do support this proposal. And I did, last time at the town hall, and I apologize, I probably was speaking, supporting it, but didn't come out and expressly say it, so, no, no, no.
Some state reps and some senators have, you know, just on the fence. And I can't understand that. If you feel strongly about this thing, if you're a legislator, if you've been involved, I couldn't even come out and push it. I'm just asking.
I agree. And thank you for, thank you, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for your questions. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Aaron Topen, and I wanted to thank the city of Oak Park for having this. It's very informative because I am still also on the fence, haven't made it my mind up yet. And thank you to, for the Wittenberg for coming and for MDOT for the Sandy. My question is about the warranties. I've done work for government agencies. What is the warranty now and what will it be if the bill passes? And then, I have a follow-up.
Okay, so I can only speak for MDOT because locals do not have warranties right now. And I think that is the biggest change. Actually, we're revisiting our entire warranty system right now. But currently, any new concrete pavement has a five-year warranty, which is actually the most stringent in the country. Any asphalt, if it's a full-depth asphalt pavement, has a three-year performance warranty. And an asphalt overlay has a two-year warranty. We're looking at what all the other states in the area are doing. This is, this is a very hot issue right now, warranties. And we're trying to see whether we need to increase the number of years. The difficulty with that is you have to have, the contractor has to keep a bond open and keep paying for that bond. And if you make the period too long, it becomes very expensive and they can't bid on other work. So, there's a right number. We've thought, we've been at that right number, but some of the feedback we're getting is some people are saying the warranty should be longer. But again, you got to balance that with the contractor's ability to have so much bonding money out and then to be able to bid on other work.
Here's my point on that. Recently, Gil Park did some, had some work done and the walkways where the sidewalk in the street, a lot of people complained that they weren't finished properly. And I believe it was City Manager Tungate, when he built, structured the deal, the deal was not paid for in completion until it was completed to our satisfaction. And I believe it was Mr. Yee that went and personally checked them all out, made sure they were done and redone. I think one of the problems that we have with Michigan is that people that were living here in Oak Park a long time, who were by six ninety-six when it was completed, it seemed after the first few years, it started to break and cracks developed. MDOT, the public feeling, I believe, is it has done a horrible job of ensuring and the warranties that they have now. So, what guarantees, it seems these warranties will be meaningless. The five-year warranty is really nothing on concrete. In Europe, they have a twenty or a thirty-year standard. So, my question is, why should we support this bill if our, we feel now that you aren't enforcing the current warranties, that this warranty thing that you're saying now really doesn't have any effect on us because you're not enforcing what you have now?
Well, I would say that we are enforcing the warranties. If there's defective work, they have to come back and fix it within the warranty period. Now, you mentioned six ninety-six, which was built twenty years ago. The existing five-year warranty, you're correct, would not cover that. And actually, we didn't even have warranties back in that period of time. So, back in that day, when that concrete, once it was accepted, we owned it. Now, if, in fact, and I don't know if that's the case or not, but if, in fact, it had started to crack prior to the five-year period, if that happened in today's environment, the contractor would be required to replace it at his cost. So, that, in our eyes, that's an improvement right there because very often, if concrete is going to fail, it will show failure within the first few years or then not until twenty years. So, I would say that the warranties are definitely effective. And again, we're looking at whether five years is the correct length of time, but there's, again, it's a balance and you can't, you can't drive contractors out of the business either by making, you know, the bonding requirement so high that they can't bid on other work, so.
All right, thank you. I think I would just be a lot more comfortable with a longer warranty and some insurances from MDOT that we are going to have a staff or a crew inspecting and enforcing those warranties.
Understood.
Hi, my name's Jackie Griffin. I've been reading up on this. I've been reading the information that comes through the paper and listening to different things on the radio and stuff. But my question is, with the, if proposal, if this proposal passes, then a large portion of the transportation amount will go to pay off the bonds that we currently have. If that is truly, if that is to happen, then my first question, it's like a free-for- question. If the proposal passes, at what point does the one percentage point increase take effect in the sales tax that would change the funding? So, when would that happen? And then, once that happens and the, and the funds are being distributed for the bonds, how long will it take for those funds to start rolling in so that those bonds could be paid and the money could be used? And then, finally, if it's going to take two years to pay off those bonds, where's the money going to come from to fix the roads now if we're spending a large portion of that money for the next two years to pay the bonds rather than pay for the roads?
Those are all excellent questions, by the way. But the, the first answer to your question is October 1st, right? Take effect October, which is the state's fiscal year, beginning of the state's fiscal year. But I want to, since I am a finance person, I want to clarify a few things on the bonds here. If you refinance bonds at a lower rate, bonds are not, you know, bonds are something you have to pay. It's a debt that you have to pay. So, it's like a credit card. If you're financed at twenty percent and you can lower it to ten, you're going to save a whole bunch of money and free that up to be used elsewhere. So, to me, that's not a bad thing. This is an obligation we have to pay whether we like it or not.
Okay. My question wasn't whether it's a bad thing or not. I understand that if you lower the interest rate, then obviously, you have more money to spend.
So, would the effect would be immediate?
But my question is, so if it doesn't go into effect till October 1st, when the new fiscal year comes in, then now we've gone through another whole summer, we still have no money for roads, we have to wait for those funds to come in, a large portion of those funds are going to go to pay off those bonds, which then you have to get new bonds. Six months from now, you don't know what the bond percentage is going to be, so you can't tell me I'm going to get fifty percent improvement on my interest rate. So, now I'm talking winter, right? We're talking November, December. It's winter again. The roads are getting worse. We're talking next summer. So, what happens between now and next summer?
I'm going to let these two answer that, but I'm going to, I'm, but I'm first going to say, here, here, to you, because I also live in the state of Michigan and, and this was the problem, this was why kicking the can down the road was such a mistake, because it's going to put things that much farther out. So, I don't know if you guys want to.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, all right. I understand your frustration and I agree. Unfortunately, this is a product of the fact that it was not addressed legislatively and it was pushed to the ballot. And at this point, whether we vote for it or not, we are still, nothing will be done this year. And I'm not saying, sorry, sorry, let me retract that. This won't take, this won't take effect until October 1st if we vote for it. If we don't vote for it, then nothing, unless we address it legislatively, will be done. And the chances of us addressing it legislatively, unfortunately, is very, very slim at best because you have a strong, strong Republican-controlled legislature. You have them controlling the House, the Senate, the governor, the Attorney General, the Supreme Court, every branch of government. And so, the plan that was offered last time is something that the Democrats will not support. I can tell you that. I will not support a plan that'll cut funding from our schools, from our local communities, from our Department of Community Health. I will never sacrifice those plays, you know, those budgets to fix our roads. It has to be, my, to be honest with you, if there was a plan where it was just the gas tax and that's how we addressed it, and that was, again, that was proposed and that was agreed upon by, you know, the governor, the, all of the senators, Senate Republicans, Senate Democrats, House Democrats. It was only the House Republicans who would not agree with it. And then, this was the result. They sent this back to the voters, so they punted. And instead of making, you know, addressing it in December, this gets pushed to May to take effect in October if it goes through. So, unfortunately, this is the position we're in. So, I wish, I wish I could tell you that May 5th, if it's approved, May 6th, we start working on things. I can tell you this, though, that some of our communities, knowing that that revenue is going to come into them, come to the cities, is going to make, they're going to make some investments in the community. And that's something Eric can probably talk about. But the communities are going to start to get money from the revenue sharing, starting in October, I assume, or November. You might, you might know more about this.
Well, you may not like my answer, but I don't, I never say never with the state unless I've received the check and I'm at the bank cashing it. So, that's when I'll be very confident that we'll be receiving those revenues.
Again, it has to be approved as well.
And I, exactly. And I would just say, as far as the revenue sharing is concerned, we think that we would get, here in Oak Park, about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars more a year in revenue sharing as a result of that. But this is all some of the problems that I personally have, which, again, I'm going to protect Oak Park taxpayers' dollars as much as I can, as City Council has hired me to do. And I won't take that money and consider it until I receive it and it's in the bank and we're operating. Good evening.
I didn't bring the paper that I should have. I'm going to work this one. My name is Amy Williams, and I was at the last town hall meeting. And since that time, I had an opportunity to do some research. And during the research, I found that it's saying that the money that we paid for pump is supposed to be for the roads and the transportation. So, now, if that money was supposed to be for the road and transportation, why is it all a big stink now about the roads? Because if you're not putting the money into the roads where it should go, your road is going to find.
Yeah.
So, those are the things that I was researching on, and I want more information on that because now I'm repeating, but she said, the way it's going now, it's going to be, this money is going to be going for more than just the roads. It's going to be taking in a whole lot of different things.
So.
That's kind of puzzled me on the bit.
Do you want me to address one, if you have another question, you want me to address that first?
Well, you can go ahead and address that.
Okay.
The thought right now is, the money, the research is saying on the internet that the money that you pay at the pump is supposed to go for the roads and the transportation. And it hasn't happened.
So, that's, that is, unfortunately, that's incorrect. So, currently, you pay sales tax, and this is what we kind of talked about earlier. You pay sales tax and you pay fuel tax. Sales tax, just the way it's set up, goes to school aid fund, revenue sharing, and the general fund. So, what they're doing, what this proposal, this proposal will do exactly what you are describing. It will take the sales tax off of the gas and then every, everything that's charged as far as taxes at the pump will then go to the roads. So, that's why this was proposed, was so that people, you know, just to exactly what you mentioned, everything that you pay at the pump, if this is approved, will go towards transportation. It will go for roads and it'll go for public transportation. So, currently, not everything you pay at the pump goes to the roads because there's that sales tax that's built in and sales tax goes to those other areas. So, if this is approved, then what you mentioned will be the case.
Okay, so what's on the internet is wrong?
What's on the internet? You might, you just might have misunderstood the part that maybe they were saying, that's what will happen if this is voted, if this is.
The way it's was, you have.
Then, no, unfortunately, that's, that's not the case.
Since we're on the internet, I'm going to come into that one. In Oak Park, we normally say, ask us at a certain time to pass a millage. Isn't that millage? Now, with this new thing that we got going, the way this proposal aid is going, would that do away with the millage? Will they be asking the citizen for a millage to be passed? Because I always support the millage when they come up with the transportation. I think they just did it to save smart this last year. So, what is going to happen with this millage? Are we going to be hit back again with the millage? Because I thought in the school... we going to be hit back again with the millage? Because I thought when the school needed money, that that millage was to go to that. Because I don't really like this happening with the school, because when I attended an affair here, they was taking up money for the van. So if we got money, the schools are being supported in Oak Park. Why do we have to pay when we there attending a program, they're asking for money to support the van? So these are the things that I'm looking at, which could need to put up, kind of fix this type of stuff, because you don't mind paying money to support stuff, but you want to see it being done. And actually, I kind of have that.
Ma'am, can I, I want to take your, take a little bit of a different track. So first of all, these are not the same funds at all. Totally separate things. But I do, since you mentioned what we're doing here in Oak Park, I did want to let you know that our City Council, just to show you how efficient we really are, we have two bond issues out there on our property tax millage, and they're both for street bonds, local street bonds. And our City Council has authorized me the 2003 issue of those street bonds, to refinance those. And we refinanced our bonds at 1.9%, what Mayor back in 2013, I think we did this. And we're looking to do our 2006 street bond refinance now, and we're hoping to get, you know, a pretty good rate. So, you know, a lot of communities aren't doing that stuff. And that savings, that goes directly to, to you and the property tax rolls. You're paying, you know, $30 to $50 less on your property taxes as a result of that first bond reissue. So that's what we're doing with our local funds, if that's what you're referring to. But as far as the other funding, they're not, those are not related to the, to the road proposal at all?
No.
No.
So it's not, so the money that we pay for the, at the pump, is going to go directly to the roads? Is this what you're saying?
No, I was not addressing that, but do you, you want to?
Well, okay, so right now, there's three different types of taxes that are collected on every gallon of gasoline. There's the state fuel tax, the federal fuel tax, and there's sales tax. The sales tax goes over to the general fund. It does, no, 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 in the, in the current, in the current, in the current condition, the 6%, so on a $4 gallon gasoline, 24 cents on every gallon goes right over to all the different, you know, the general fund and the schools and all the other things. So this ballot, ballot proposal will replace that portion that, that was going, that right now goes over to the general fund. It replaces that with increased fuel taxes. All those fuel taxes will be used strictly for roads. They cannot go to schools. It cannot go to any other, it can, it, I'm sorry, when I say roads, I really mean transportation, because there's different types of transportation. So the, what this bill does is it corrects what's collected at the pump goes to transportation. The sales tax that's taken off, it's, that's got to be replaced, and so that's what this bill does. It increases the sales tax from 6% to 7% to make up for that amount that is not being collected in sales tax on the sale of a gallon of gasoline. So I hope that explains it. I know it's a complex issue. And just so you know, we're one of only five states in the entire country that currently collects sales tax on gasoline. So when you hear that Michigan collects a lot of tax on gas, they're looking at the overall, those three categories I mentioned to you. And so this, this bill addresses and corrects that issue.
Okay, so, okay, so.
When I first came in, I thought you were saying something about the state do not have transportation to the airport. Coming from New York, I did find that to be a problem. Now, with this proposal, is this going to allow transportation to, you can go downtown and be able to get a bus to take you out to the airport? But if you can, you're saying something.
Wouldn't that be nice? So much more convenient. Well, there, there is, if you want me to start, there, there is some funding that could go towards mass transportation, but what that will be used for is still, I think, up for debate. I will say this. I was just elected to the Executive Committee of SEMCOG, who is working on a project, Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, and they're working on a project, the Ann Arbor to Detroit Rail Project, and the airport is a connection in between. I don't start my term until, I think, June 1st, but wait till they get a low to me, because that's exactly what I want to talk about. So.
And then I will absolutely support as well.
Okay, so I want to have one other, you know, I was out talking to different people, and I was telling them about the registration when the new car, you know, it would stay the same. Now with the old cars, what would happen there? Will you stay, keep going down, or will you just freeze where you're at, at this particular time when it's going to affect? For the old cars, you told us what was going to happen with the new cars. They would have to continue to pay the registration fee. It will be going down like it nominally would. So what happened to the old cars? Their registration?
My, my, I'm sorry. My understanding is this doesn't affect the old cars, their grandfathered in. This only affects new cars and the rates that are collected on new vehicle registrations.
Correct.
So you're saying that they'll continue going the same way that you go on?
Yes.
So basically.
Any more questions, then we're going to have you come up here, solve, no, I'm just kidding. Those are great questions. Thank you very much. How about a few more? We've spent about an hour on this particular issue, so how about a few more? Good evening.
Go like that, okay. Hi, my name is Christine Kausgriff. I, I guess my main question is for MDOT. Since you said it's competitive bidding, does that mean you always go with the lowest, lowest bid? And then if it's the lowest bid, it seems like a contractor would use the, the cheapest materials? And then if it doesn't last five years, they come back and fix it on their own dime, which means they're probably going to cut corners again? So what kind of monitoring? I mean, I mean, let's say they come back and, and have to redo something, and then do they have another five-year period that they're on like probation or something?
Well, okay, let me address that. There's a lot of different things you mentioned there. For contracting, MDOT does do competitive bidding for all of our contracting, and we always have. That's just the way we've always done business. So this doesn't change that environment at all. It's always low bid. But we have specifications that are really, really stringent, that every contractor has to follow. Then every project that we do is inspected and thoroughly inspected. And so, none of this bill changes the way that we do business in that regard. Now, if we've accepted it, we've accepted the material, say, let's talk about concrete for a minute. We've accepted the concrete, it passed all the testing, everything looks good, and then it were to start to crack earlier in that five-year period, the contractor would have to come back and replace it, and the warranty is still a five-year warranty. That doesn't end the warranty when he replaces it. It's still a five-year warranty.
An additional five years?
It's, from my understanding, it's not an additional five year, it's a total of five year.
So they could catch it up as long as it's going to let, they could force you, or they could just throw something in?
No, no, no. They have to comply to the same standard that they did originally. So you're getting a brand-new concrete that's built to the same specifications as the original. They can't, they can't just go in and do their thing or do what they want to do or cut corners. Our, again, our testing requirements and our inspection requirements and the amount of documentation that we have to do is, is just exhaustive and extensive. And that's one of the reasons that road building is very, very expensive.
If this does not pass, does that mean you guys, are you going to still change your warranty?
Well, we're, we're looking at the whole warranty process, regardless of whether this passes or not. So I don't think it's, it's tied to this bill. The, the big difference is, right now, none of the local agencies, the road commissions or the locals are required to have warranties. This bill would require that they have competitive bidding and have warranties as well. So in, in terms of the warranties, MDOT's already there.
And then finally, you probably don't know the answer to this, but you go across the bridge to Canada, they got the same crappy weather, and they don't have potholes. What do they do differently?
My guess, and I haven't, I only see the numbers on what they spend in other states in the area, and I'm not really sure if that information's not available, but my guess would be that Canada probably spends a tremendous amount more per, per person or per lane mile than we do on, on their roads. Right, because of they collect a much higher tax than we do. I don't know exactly what they spend, but I do know that gasoline is very expensive in Canada.
Yeah, well, they're doing something right, because their cars last longer. Okay, thank you.
Sure. And just, just a follow-up on that, and it is something that we mentioned earlier. We do have the same, you know, freeze thaws that other states around us have, and we have the same weather, yet they have better roads. And again, that goes back to the fact that we're 50th as far as per capita investment in infrastructure in the state of Michigan. So we are last for a reason, and it shows when you drive on our roads. So yeah, and I would guess in Canada, they're obviously investing more in their, in their road, for the roads and infrastructure.
Thank you for those wonderful questions. I, I see one of our school board members, and by the way, I have to apologize, because earlier when I was introducing folks, I neglected to introduce two of our school board members. Monakam Hoyda is here, and he's about to ask one of the most positive, intelligent questions ever. So let's be ready for that. And then Maxine Goodfriend is here as well. And I apologize, I didn't see you there. I'm sorry. Take it away.
He took the microphone away from me, which I guess is something I should be used to. But I, I did want to mention a couple of things. And I can stand here today, I was here at the last meeting also, but today I can stand here very proud that the Oak Park School Board last week unanimously voted to support this proposal. And in doing that, we joined many, many other school districts and the Superintendent's Association, the School Boards Association. And the reason, and I think someone mentioned earlier about where the money for the Safe Roads Yes campaign is coming from, and it's coming from labor groups, it's coming from business groups, it's coming from school groups. And I think that really speaks to the importance of this proposal, that so many different areas that usually would not agree on something have come together to support this. And the reason that we support it in the school community is not just because of the importance of the roads, which is obviously the most important part, but also in passing Proposal One, there's going to be increased funding for at-risk districts, like our district here, where we have many youth that are coming from homes in poverty. There's going to be significant increase in funding to help those students succeed. Probably most importantly, something we've asked for for years, it's going to constitutionally protect the school aid fund, so that that money can no longer be taken out of school aid fund to spend on other priorities. It can, it will be spelled out in the Constitution that it can only be spent on education, on K-12 education and community colleges. In the past, the legislature, both Democrats and Republicans, have taken that money, used it to fund universities, which is important, but universities charge tuition, universities have endowments. So that's very, very important for, for our students. But finally, if this doesn't pass, so if it does pass, it's going to be really good for our students. If it doesn't pass, we're worried that what we're going to see is the legislature going back into school aid fund, taking money out of that. And when hundreds of millions of dollars disappear from school aid fund, that's going to affect us significantly here on a local level. So in addition to the importance of the roads, this is very, very important as well to our students and our school community. Thank you very much.
Was I right? Okay. Since there aren't any other questions, do we have any written questions? Jocelyn?
I want to thank you, John, because this is what I do every day for a living, and I, and the mayor will tell you at that 14th district, when you have handicapped kids strapped in and you run into them bad roads, it's a scary situation. So that's why I'm coming here, because it's important to my heart. I want to thank you and your board. I don't even know who you are. The second, the, the second question is that I wanted to make to help you out, since you're going to be a part of SEMCOG. I used to be part of the Citizens Advisory for Transportation. You'll be introduced to Michael Ford and Tiffany Guffner over to the Regional Transit Authority. There are plans to do some buses, in terms of what this lady was saying, running to the airport. Now, depending on how the funding goes, might be looking at rail. I don't know. But that was to answer your question, and that would help you answer your question as well.
Sure.
Because then you'll know what you'll come into. But they're represented by Detroit, Wayne, Oakland, Monroe County, you know, that'd help you. So I just thought I'd throw that in.
Sure, thank you. Absolutely, thank you. Okay, I want to give you guys one more opportunity to wrap up here real briefly, but I do want to thank Sandra and our State Representative. Do you have last comments before we move to the next issue?
No, I'm just.
Okay, you want, okay, good. Absolutely, thank you. Okay, great job.
While he's, while he's looking this up. Again, we, you know, we do this, and I, and I appreciate you recognizing the fact that we're doing this and trying to educate the voters in the community. So you're here, I encourage you to talk to your friends and your neighbors, whether you support this or you don't support this. It is so important that we get out to vote. Turnout is so low, when it's not a November election, it's usually pretty low. This is a May election. We expect a low turnout, unfortunately. Please, please, please get out there and vote May 5th, or by absentee ballot. I don't think they'll be able to get it tonight, I don't think. But you can, you can mail in to get an absentee ballot, or come here to City Hall and get an absentee ballot if you're not going to be available on May 5th. But please, please, please get out to vote, get your friends, your family, everyone you know, to vote. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to ask our Economic Development Manager and Sharon to come up and join me. I'm going to do a brief presentation, the exact presentation that I did at the last town hall, and then same format, we're going to answer questions as you have them. So, we're talking about our local proposal, the sale of spirits and mixed spirit drinks for consumption on premises. I want to hedge all of the things that you're about to hear first and say that this is not a political, social, religious, or any other issue for the administration. This is simply a matter of economic development. Now, we received this issue on our ballot as a condition of a private signature drive, which requires us to put it on the ballot. Having said all of that, from an administrative perspective, we support economic development in our community and are looking at it through that lens. So I wanted to get that out there. Okay, I'm going to go through a quick history definition of what is, what are mixed spirits, economic development, key elements of approval process, enforcement, and then some next steps. How did we get here? We started having discussions about economic development in early 2012. And actually, the mayor had these discussions long before 2012, and the mayor took office in 2011 and was having these discussions at that time. When I came in 2012, we began putting some meat to the bones of the discussion. City Council in 2013, as many of you here know, established what is called a tavern license ordinance. And a tavern license in the state of Michigan allows only the consumption of beer and wine, and for us, that means the consumption of beer and wine in restaurants in the city of Park, Oak Park only. In, beginning in 2013 and going into 2014, and most, and fairly recently completed, we hired a firm to conduct a strategic economic development plan for our city. And they identified as one of our prime considerations that restaurant growth was a viable strategy for increased tax revenue for the city. And I'll have to say, our residents in the room, I don't have to say this to their residents in the room, but you know that after the recession of 2008, the residential areas started recovering much faster than the commercial areas. The commercial areas of our city, God bless them, they have been dragging us down from a taxable value revenue perspective. So what are mixed spirits? Spirits and mixed spirit drinks license allows an establishment to sell beer, wine, and liquor, and that's for consumption in restaurants only. It's administered and enforced by the State of Michigan Liquor Control Commission, and Sharon will be talking about some things in a moment. We currently have two Oak Park restaurants who are licensed to sell beer and wine. One of our owners is here, from Sahara. So what does our ordinance propose? If this passes in the city of Oak Park, City Council has made it clear that we would grant restaurants only to serve beer, wine, and liquor on premises, and we believe that currently there are fewer than 10 locations in our entire city that would meet the land use criteria established by the Oak Park Planning Commission and then adopted by City Council. So our population gives us, I think Sharon, what, about 19 or so, based on our population?
Yeah, one for every 1,500.
Okay. So doing the math there, we got, what, about 20? And because of the additional layer of restrictions that our City Council adopted, only about 10. 10 locations throughout the city, and that's if those locations even wanted to have this, would be able to do it. And we think, as I said a moment ago, that it gives the city another tool to retain and attract restaurants. We have some great restaurants in our city, and we want to keep them, and enhance them, and make them even better, but we also want to attract new restaurants to our city, and we think that if we have this tool, that we'll be able to do that. And by the way, it also keeps more of our spending power in Oak Park, so that means Oak Parkers can spend their own dollars in their own city. Do you know that 77% of Oak Parkers are spending their dollars for this kind of thing outside of the city as it stands today? 77% of you. Really? We can do better. And I talked about the 2008 crash. I've talked about this so much, I'm not going to say too much more than just know that this was a very difficult road for us, as it was for many local units of government. I mean, one example, and this kind of gets back to the road bill, but we believe that revenue sharing wise, and, you know, the city of Detroit has lost hundreds of millions of dollars in state revenue sharing, and we're looking at, you know, in 2001 having about $5 million, in 2014 having about $3. So, do the math, that's a lot of money that we've now missed. Multiple years of sustained decreases in taxable values, especially in commercial properties, as I discussed a moment ago, and losses in business personal property tax revenue. This previous year, this previous tax year, we saw our first increase in total taxable value since the crash of 2008. So, think about this. The last six, seven years, we have been in recovery mode, and only last year did we start seeing increases in taxable values. 60-some percent of our entire revenue picture comes from taxable value revenues. So, you can imagine, if we were a business, we'd be out of business. So, we're doing a heck of a lot more with a heck of a lot less. And I wanted to show you this because it's from the regional perspective now, but this is the SEMCOG, you can see in the, I don't know if you can see the yellow there, but shows the taxable values, and you can just, it's right there, clear as day, that we are starting to see a recovery, of course, but it's been a long time coming. So, our study that I mentioned a moment ago suggests that dining out is a growing trend, you know, this availability of this additional tool for our restaurant owners helps them grow and expand, and if they grow and expand, guess what? The shops next door grow and expand, et cetera. 57% of Americans surveyed will dine out at least one night per week. I must not be in this group, I dine out more than one night per week because I'm so busy, probably some of you too. Typically, for every dollar spent at a restaurant, $2 is spent at a nearby business. That's pretty significant, so think about that. And I think more, even more telling is that you can currently purchase alcohol at various retail locations around the city. And to me, I'm going to hedge this and say this is my opinion, but liquor stores do more to take away from our community, no offense to our liquor stores, than a restaurant serving beer, wine, and liquor. Imagine. And we have eight of these liquor stores in our community today. So, we mentioned, it's about 23, I guess, if we do give or take here, in terms of licenses that might be available. Of course, City Council has the final say. Okay, they talked about the zoning limitations. So, we've been talking to some of our business owners, and especially the ones that are licensed, the two. And it has increased your sales, right? It's made business better. Have you had to hire additional staff?
Yes.
Okay. Have you increased your menu options?
We're actually not.
And you've had your license for one year because we renewed it last night, right? Okay.[857.13][857.13](Laughter). And certainly created more vibrancy in the area. We require, City Council requires that any of our licensed restaurants in the city be certified, and we prefer the serve-safe training, and I think that's what you have, if I'm not mistaken. And that's a state-certified program administered through the Michigan Restaurant Association. Okay, so then we thought, okay, are we the most unique community in the entire metropolitan area? Because up until 2013, we were called the dry community. And lo and behold, our Economic Development Manager, Kim Maroney, found out that there's this Dutch Reformed community, which I grew up about 20 miles down the street from, over in west Michigan, that was in the same boat. And we asked the city manager, this is the city of Hudsonville, you probably know the ice cream. It's pretty good. It's pretty good. Black Cherry is amazing, if you like Black Cherry. It's, it is really good. It's a very, it's a very conservative town over in west Michigan. And the city manager said to us, I think if you ask most people now, they would say that the adoption of the ordinance to allow alcohol sales has been a positive change and has led to the opening of more businesses. We now have two microbreweries in the city as well. We now have zoning that will allow for a microbrewery to locate in our community. Wouldn't that be great? So, the approval process, the fun, the fun part. Right, Zena, this is the fun part? How long did it take you to get approved? Nine months? Was it fun?
Eight months.
So, yeah, absolutely. That's, that's a great point, because once the, once the city has given the go-ahead, then the state has to give the go-ahead. Public safety, so, so my administration takes the site plan review and makes a recommendation of the Planning Commission, City Council then looks at the site plan, and the business license has to be approved separately by city, by my administration as well as City Council. The Class C liquor would have, license would have to be approved by the administration as well as City Council, and then again, ultimately, the Liquor Control Commission would have to approve all of it. This is a very strenuous, difficult process, but we've done this so that we make sure that we're protecting you and our residents. It requires an annual review, and we just did this last night at the City Council meeting. Pretty substantial review process, huh? And if the businesses that are licensed do not meet the requirements that both the city and the state have laid out, then guess what? We're going to ask the state to revoke that license. And I want to talk about a couple of other things that are some of the elements of the approval. The restaurant must have a minimum, a minimum, of 10 food items on their menu, and not more than 50% of their total sales could be derived from the sale of alcohol. They also must contain a plan of operation for review and consideration by City Council, and this is the state law, if Class C is approved, they cannot locate within 500 feet of a school or religious institution. I don't think you can see this very well, maybe you can. These are some of the commercial zoning districts of the community, and we've pointed out just a handful of restaurants that may be able to apply should the measure pass. Okay, enforcement. So, our public safety officers, and I think our director's now gone to his next meeting. Where is he? Okay. He's, oh, there he is, okay. So, our public safety officers have the authority to enforce Michigan liquor laws, obviously Michigan State Police, and of course, the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. Our public safety department is equipped to handle pretty much every alcohol-related issue. And I'll tell you that in speaking with my staff, and the director and I talk very regularly about this issue, we have not seen an uptick in issues whatsoever. I don't think we've been to Sahara Restaurant one time since they've had a license. One time. I'm picking on you because you're here, I'm sorry. I mean, you know, and I get the question a lot, that, you know, drunk driving is going to increase and all of that, but guess what? Folks are driving through our community drunk now. They're just going from Berkeley to the next community, or whatever community to the next one. And we're going to enforce it and find them no matter where they're drinking or where they're coming from. So, next step, special election, Tuesday, May 5th, okay? Kim, do you want to come up and say a few things, and Sharon as well? Do you want to come up and say a few things before we take questions, or you just want to take questions? Have I covered it all?
Just a couple of quick things before we start taking questions. I was looking at the information I brought with me today about what your quota is, and what I'm showing is based upon your population figures, you have 29,319 in population, which gives you 20 that you can issue. Right now, I'm showing you have three taverns issued, and you have 17 available, so I don't know where, that, oh, okay, it might be a nuskr, possibly? Okay, so we show you have 17 available to issue at this point in time. Okay. So, that's all I wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you. Want to add anything?
Basically, the commission doesn't advocate either way whether or not you authorize the sale of spirits to your governmental unit. It's basically up to the voters, and that, at this point, is because back in 1954, there was actually a vote by the citizens of Oak Park that turned down the authorization for sale of spirits for on-premise consumption. So, at this point, it does require a vote by the public in order to overturn that 1954 decision. So, it's been a long time since this issue has been revisited, so here's your opportunity. And along with the state police, local law enforcement, we have an enforcement division that also enforces the liquor law. They can come into communities and they can do cooperations, or if you have complaints about a particular business, they will send somebody in to do a check of that business. So, the liquor control is also heavily involved in enforcement of liquor-related laws. And I think that's really all I have right now, and I'm assuming there's going to be some questions, so I'll turn the microphone over.
Kim, can you say just a few things?
So, Eric briefly mentioned that this is one of our economic development tools. I don't think this is on, so I apologize. Okay, there we go. So, Eric mentioned this is one of our economic development tools to help bring businesses into our community, and he's absolutely right. If you look at a lot of communities where you have a strong restaurant as an anchor, it helps to attract the rest of the retail businesses and other types of bakeries and whatever follows within that complex. So, it helps all of your shopping center owners to fill the entire complex and then bring more tax revenue into this community. If you look at entertainment in this town, we were voted as one of the most boring communities in Michigan. The list you don't want to be on. That will help us to attract those businesses that provide entertainment. If you even look at some of the new models for movie theaters today, they include alcohol sales as part of them. And right now, we're not able to attract any of those types of businesses into our community. And I think this would be a great opportunity for the residents of Oak Park, increase your property values, and attract new residents into our community, and the important thing is to get out and vote.
Absolutely. I want to just say one more thing, too, that I don't want to give you the impression that liquor licenses is our only tool. It's one of our economic development tools, and we have others. And you may have heard last night, and I think it really needs to be said, because it was a historic moment, City Council approved this gigantic, 300, how many?
303,000.
303,000 square foot development on our armory site down here on Greenfield and Eight Mile. Historic moment for City Council and for this community. And so, we're using other economic development tools to do those kinds of things. And you can imagine, that's probably going to help our taxable values increase and your property values increase as a result of that. So, we're working on a whole myriad of different things. Let's start, you have a whole sheet filled up, ready to, we're at the bottom of that. It was, most of it was for the MDOT folks, so.
Okay.
Or she, run it.
Okay. I guess my one question is, if we're starting to recover, as you said, Eric, the downfall, why would we want to approve this? If we're starting to recover since 2008, 2014, we started recovering according to your chart, why would we want to approve this?
I have a, a wonderful question, because I had, we lost 15 officers, in one example. We lost 15 officers in the layoffs before I arrived as city manager, when the previous, Rick Fox was the previous city manager. I've only been able to afford to hire eight of them back, and I want to get the other seven back. It's that simple. We want to bring our operation up to a point where we're not just sort of run-of-the-mill boring community, we want to be the best possible community in metropolitan Detroit. And let me give you another example. In 2001, our general fund budget was $21 million. Today, it's just over $16. So, there's a substantial cut that we want to get back to this model that we think fits.
So, of course, you know me, but not everybody else knows me. And I'm always the devil's advocate. As you stated, we want to get those officers back. If we don't approve this, do we really need them?
Yes.[1485.15][1485.15](Laughter).
I mean, do we need the officers because we?
Look how nice he is. You're saying you don't need more of him?
I love Officer Cooper, there's no doubt about that. But, the explanation was that, you know, we have less officers, and if we approve this, then we would have more. Do we really need more?
Well, let me, let me say this, and I, yes, I do know you, but I, but I also have to push back a little bit here, and say that, you know, can we efficiently run, and we're just using the public safety department as one example here, can we efficiently run our public safety department with what we have today? Yes. Because our, our folks will do whatever it takes. I don't take your safety lightly. It's my primary consideration when I took my oath of office and was appointed to this position, and I know our director doesn't take it lightly either. Could we do more and better work with seven or more officers additional to our staff? Absolutely. We could have a tactical unit that maybe we don't have today, et cetera. There's a whole variety of things that, you know, we used to do, and I'm not saying the old model, whatever that was, was exactly the way that we would want things to be, but we certainly could find new and better ways to make sure that our residents are safe throughout the city, that maybe, you know, with fewer officers, we're not able to do.
Okay. And of course, at the last town hall, meaning, it was mentioned that sidewalk cafes, do we actually have any now?
We, how many do we have? We have?
We only have one that does that, Starbucks.
So, we have, then we have others that are?
We, we had a temporary license for one last.
You want to?
Sorry. We recently just started allowing sidewalk cafes in our community, they've been around for about a year now. Side, I'm sorry, Starbucks does have their own sidewalk cafe, and the only other one that did apply for one last fall was Sukata, no, no, I'm sorry. It was Cravings, thank you. And that was a temporary license. So, we're encouraging the restaurants today to put them in because it is something that residents and visitors like to do, and dine outside. We only have a few more months in Michigan, and Michigan people do tend to like to eat outside, so we do encourage it today, but.
Okay. And of course, I have, I came in three, sorry.
I thought it was just a little bit of that sheet you said, now you're making this?
I have three questions.
Okay, all right.
Is there a requirement to order food at the restaurant if you want to order liquor?
No.
No.
Do you want to take this?
Yeah.
The definition of a Class C license is, basically, it's a public license for the service of beer, wine, and spirits. The commission or the liquor control statute does not define a Class C license as having to serve food. That would be something that's up to the local governmental unit to put in their ordinance for a liquor license. So, say if I want to come in and start a restaurant, and I come to the city of Oak Park, and their requirement is that I serve, that I can verify 50% of my sales is going to be for food, they're going to have to meet that requirement because that is mandated by the city of Oak Park. That's not something the Liquor Control Commission requires.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your questions. Wonderful, thank you, have a good evening. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Zena Tisha from Sahara Restaurant, and thank you for renewing our license yesterday for our tavern license, and.
Thank you, City Council. Wasn't me, City Council.
City Council, for their oath. And, well, a few things I want to touch on that we, that she mentioned, that I'm hearing. As far as the, the fact that this is an economic development tool, and she asked the question, okay, how many sidewalk cafes are there? She, you mentioned there's one. Well, because it wasn't even allowed until a year ago, so why would any public building or commercial building even have built, been built to allow that? I wish I had a sidewalk that was 20 feet wide, so I could have outdoor seating. So, maybe now I have to send a letter to my landlord and ask if he's ever going to consider redoing the sidewalk in front of our plaza. So, because it just became a law, all these commercial buildings are not even prepared to handle sidewalk cafes, and maybe Starbucks is newer, I'm not sure, you know, maybe they had the room to do it. So, basically, what we've seen at our restaurant, and I'll tell you what, it's not that it's substantially making us all this money all of a sudden, what it is, is it's What it is, is it's, it's letting our customers realize that if they did want to have beer or wine with their meal right now, that's what they're allowed to have up until midnight, that they, that that option is there and it's available. It's not saying that, it basically doesn't handicap me anymore in that area. So when they come into our restaurant, we're not, we're not a bar. We're still Sahara Restaurant, a Mediterranean restaurant in business in the city and paying taxes for 33 years, which is almost half the age of the city. So we've been here a lot, a long time with a lot of people here and we've grown with the city. And, and in the past and being just acceptive of the status quo and, oh, what do we need more officers for and what do we need to change things for? Well, it's not like it used to be. It's just not. At the time in 1967, Oak Park was the fastest growing city. It's not anymore. We're 50th in the state for roads. We're falling behind, so we're not, we're not keeping up with the changes and, and the other cities and states are speeding up and passing us by. So we have to do something and it seems like there's a lot of urgency. The, I heard excellent news yesterday about the Old Armory and the shipping facility that's coming in, that I grew up right in Southfield for 21 years and, and so I've been very close to Oak Park and drove past Oak Park and yes, Oak Park schools are, are great and everything. We, we've been hearing, we, Oak Park, Berkeley, Southfield, Ferndale, Huntington Woods, we're all tied together, Ferndale, everybody. It just seems like Oak Park is just getting like more and more hidden and we're just getting like not, it's being passed by. And so I just feel like this is something the city needs. We need people to exit Greenfield and Coolidge and say, oh, we're going there because there's a champs. There's a Chuck E. Cheese to take my kids to. There is a J. Alexander's. There's, you know, besides Applebee's. From, I live in West Bloomfield, so from Novi to Sterling Heights, there's no Chuck E. Cheese. I'm just saying that's a popular place for kids and maybe people don't have children, but there's a lot of families in between that route and taking, you know, that into consideration. And then, then if you think about it, what, what is there for the children until beer and wine was approved and Chuck E. Cheese has beer on the menu, they would have never thought to come to Oak Park. So maybe they will think about that now. And there's a lot of young families here and there's nowhere to go. We used to have Americana Theater on Greenfield. Maybe they'll consider coming back. Back in the days when I was 10, 12 years old, my dad used to take us to the theater on Greenfield. That's gone. There's a lot of things gone and I would love to see them come back. So it's not just for Sahara. It's not about just restaurants. What about everything else? Where, everything is, is passing us by and these other cities that had nothing now have so much more to offer than Oak Park does. And Oak Park is a great city and has, it's almost a diamond in the rough and we need to, we need to let people know how great Oak Park is.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Jackie Griffin. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned in your slide that Hudsonville added tavern license and how it, how it increased and they have a microbrewery now? Does a microbrewery sell 50% of their sales in?
They would have to here.
Okay, so.
That is, that, that may not be a requirement there, but here, if, if a microbrewery located here, they would have to do that here.
Okay. So what areas, I'm, we, I talk about this all the time. Really thinking about it, because there's not very many restaurants in Oak Park, I usually leave. What areas really have the, the available space, parking space, business space, store space to be able to bring in a major chain restaurant or other restaurants besides near Sahara? They have a great spot right off the freeway. I mean, they have a great spot. And then Lincoln Center obviously has a large.
I think this shows the areas.
A large open space. So what other areas are we looking to?
Is there a map in here that's better?
That would be my first question.
Well, I'm going to let our, Kim, why don't you?
Your question in regards to other locations that we could locate a restaurant like that, we don't have a good map to show you that because we have to take into consideration where all the schools and the religious institutions are and they can't be located within 500 feet of that. So unfortunately, I don't have a map that represents that. When we were talking about the 10 locations that we could put these types of restaurants into or liquor licenses, we're referring to our existing restaurants today. Of those, only 10 of them in their current locations would be able to apply for this classy liquor license.
Because of zoning issues or?
Because of location irrelevant, irrelevance to the religious and schools. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So where, I guess I'm confused. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand. I think this, I think that the city has to grow and I think they do need to bring in more avenues for people to do things here. That's how you bring in other people and you're going to have to draw from Ferndale and you're going to have to draw from Royal Oak and you're going to have to draw from Berkeley and Southfield. So if there's only 10 locations, are they large locations? Are they small locations? I mean, I just, we think about, I've lived here almost my whole life. I remember what it was like when I was a kid. A lot of those locations where there used to be restaurants are occupied with other businesses. You're not going to put a restaurant there. And if you can't be within 500 feet of a school or religious building, facility, organization, where is really left?
Well, here's our state rep. That's a, that's part of the state law, by the way, so that's, you know. But that's, I just, I wanted to point out that the 500-foot rule is not a local rule. It's part of the state statute, so.
I understand that, but where's left? Other than the two big locations, what area in general?
There, there's no in general area because schools and churches are located scattered throughout our community. But there are a lot of locations and even though you may have a current business in, for instance, a prime location that you could put one of these businesses in, doesn't mean that they're going to stay there because a lot of times they'll get bought out by somebody who has more money that wants to do what they want to do and they'll move their business to another location. So there, there is a lot of vacant space that we could put these types of establishments into that they would be able to qualify for this type of license. Doesn't show on the map, but trust me, it's there and I'd be happy to meet with you and show you the map.
Okay.
So feel free to visit me.
My, me.
I think she may want to start a business in our community.
Maybe. I do have one more question, though. For the, for the committee, like how are you, what is your plan, assuming that this passes and you're trying to bring in new business? What is your plan of attack to withdraw people away from those surrounding communities, away from Ferndale, Royal Oak, Berkeley, Southfield, to bring those people back into this area versus them staying there? Because obviously they have a very broad population.
Well, the, the city's plan and, and, you know, I've directed Kim and other staff that, of course, we're not here to prey upon cities around us, but, you know, we've, we've seen that play out, haven't we? But I would just make this point that if 77% of you are currently leaving to go to other cities, how about we just capture you back? And we might be a little bit better. Let's use that for starters and let's let private business people make decisions on attracting new customers from elsewhere after that. Good evening, sir.
Hi, how's it going? My name's Jordan Towery. If you get some reverb, they're saying to hold these really close to your mouth, so it's like some Steven Tyler stuff going on. My name's Jordan Towery, Executive Director of the Eight Mile Boulevard Association. I've been to a few Oak Park Town Hall meetings and so it's actually really good to be back here in one of our member communities. I remember showing up and participating in the Town Hall where you first talked about the tavern license. And I really just wanted to speak, to kind of offer some of the perspective of what we're seeing on Eight Mile. That kind of speaks to some of the, the points that are already, already being heard. Talk about spending happening outside of your community. If you're familiar with Eight Mile and Woodward where the Gateway Marketplace is, a lot of the reason that was built was precisely for that. Detroiters were shopping at Meyer, they were going to restaurants, they were going to stores, and this brought all of that revenue back into the city. And one of the big announcements that they just did is if you've ever driven by there and you've noticed recently there's an empty lot at the corner, well, that corner's about to be filled with a brand-new Applebee's that, by the way, sells the beer, wine, and liquor. And, and a lot of it is really, and what's nice about the way your community is approaching considering this is all the sort of issues that you might deal with with just an open-ended liquor license. I mean, on Eight Mile, we have over 1,700 properties, so at that scale, you tend to see some trends. You see a little bit of everything. Your community's doing a really good job of tailoring this ordinance to make sure it attracts exactly what you want and only what you want. So the, specifically that requirement, about 50% of your revenue has to come from food. You can't be oriented to be anything other than a restaurant for that to work. If you come in to try to just be a bar, even if you have 12 items on your menu, if you're a bar, it's just not going to work, so you're not going to locate there. But the main perspective I wanted to offer, because we deal with this closely on Eight Mile with these large developments, like what you're doing at the Armory, which is really exciting, but also as a really good parallel, you should really take a look at what's going on at the Michigan State Fairgrounds site. Because what tends to happen is, somebody made the point earlier that it's not just about the restaurants, it's about what snowballs around them. And a lot of times, development is, it reminds me of like the high school dance floor, you know, you wait for a few cool kids to get on before you get on, even if the music's playing. And when you have a development, you get some of these heavy anchors that come in, everybody says, oh, it's safe now, it's safe, and we can come in too. And so the fairgrounds really building off the momentum that's going on in Gateway and that Applebee's is really, really pushing things as well. And the fairgrounds are talking about a theater, more sit-down restaurants. And what it really does, just opens you up for options. And again, you're probably, of all the Eight Mile communities, probably, I mean, I don't know so far as in the state, maybe West Michigan's a little more conservative. I don't know why I'm pointing up there. West Michigan's not really there. But your ordinance really, I, I have to emphasize that really well. You've done a really good job of, of kind of thinking about this from 360 degrees to make sure it gives you exactly what you want and you don't have these unintended consequences. But, I mean, I could tell you again, from Eight Mile's perspective and when you see the challenges on different properties, you know, whether it's environmental remediation or all these other challenges that are for investment, if you have your ordinances in line to help businesses when they're making these calculations, because especially for the chains, this is for entrepreneurs as well, but for the chains, it's really, the real estate world, they joke, it's all run by the financial people. And so they have these, these calculations and filters that look at for different locations. And you talked about not wanting to be a boring community. I don't really think Oak Park's that boring, but I think it's, it's in terms of looking like everywhere else, when these, these financial folks and these chains, they're looking at communities in the region. They look at us as a big, big, just blank region, metro Detroit. And obviously Detroit kind of weighs heavily on that, but they'll say, all right, well, if we want to open a restaurant, X percent can come from food, X percent can come from beer and wine, and all these different things are baked into the, the projected profitability of that business. So not being able to sell beer, wine, and liquor takes, you know, 10, 20% off the revenue and that could be the difference between yes, let's pull the trigger and open a store here, and no, it's not a safe area, we got to go somewhere else where we can do it. So it just opens you up for options and, and again, I mean, just even seeing how you, you all kind of vet through these issues is really encouraging and I think it's an example for the other Eight Mile communities, but I know you guys will make, you know, whatever choice you feel is right and that's good. I just wanted to offer the Eight Mile perspective. So if you have any questions for me, I'll, I'll be around, I can leave my info, too. But thanks for letting me speak.
Thanks, Jordan. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aaron Tobin and one of the statements that was said earlier was that it's simply an economic development, but it, it is not. I want everyone here to think about the personal factor. I have a very dear friend of mine that was killed by a drunk driver. I'll never see him again. If God forbid, somebody loses a child because a drunk driver had too much to drink at Oak Park Restaurant, I know that the council, the mayor would feel horrible about it. We need to talk about, we have a tremendous amount of people walking in Oak Park. We have a lot of Russian immigrants that take daily walks. We have a lot of Orthodox Jewish people that don't drive from Friday night to Saturday night and on their holidays, they are out walking in, in the streets. I was watching the news less than two weeks ago, Ferndale had a tremendous problem with the bar at Nine Mile and Woodward. And residents were urinating in the street after they got thrown out of the bar. They were blocking, parking on the street, blocking driveways. There were fights, there were stabbings. To the city's own admission, we are short police officers right now. This can, will definitely aggravate when you have people getting drunk at a bar. Okay, so they're asked to leave. When they go out or they have a fight or they're urinating in the parking lot because they can't go back into the restaurant, police are called. So now we're going to have two, three police cars at a restaurant serving liquor instead of patrolling my streets to make sure that they're safe and bicycles aren't being stolen and airbags aren't being stolen and tires being stolen off of vehicles, which we've, we've had in Oak Park. But I want to remember the human aspect. It is not just simply economic development. Oak Park has been known for decades as a bedroom community. Many Oak Park residents love that we're a bit boring. We can go out and, and come home to a safe neighborhood. We have an excellent police department that keeps our neighborhood safe. Remember that we are bringing in elements from outside. When you bring in all this economic development, it's a double-edged sword and I would like to impress upon the people of Oak Park to remember the human element. It is not just all about money. Thank you very much.
Just want to say a couple of things. The, the, one of the things that was mentioned, you used the word bars. This in no way would allow for bars to operate in our community. So bars, nightclubs, strip clubs, whatever it may be, will not be allowed to operate in our community. And that's part of what I discussed about the stringent rules and the ordinance. These are restaurants and, and I'm not going to sit up here and say that we're not going to have any incidents related to more liquor licenses in our community, but I don't know the last time I was at a restaurant and sitting down and there was a brawl that broke out. I think the positives far outweigh the negatives, but there are negatives. Let's be honest, there's negatives with everything in our society. So thank you.
My name is Maxine Goodfriend. I've lived here a very long time. I've been a part of this bedroom community, as it's just been called, for a very long time. And I've enjoyed living in a bedroom community. I don't enjoy a dull community that we live in today. I'm not happy that we had to lay off our fire and public safety men. I'm not happy about that. I'm not happy that we have shopkeepers that have been here for a long time that have just wasted away. When we accuse, sorry, when we accuse us of having a tavern that would only serve alcohol, that's not a truth of what this ordinance would be. I think it's terribly important to be honest to the community. We all know exactly what is said on the ballot itself. It is for a restaurant-type of, of situation where food has to be served. I see it in Berkeley all the time. It works well. I see it in Ferndale all the time. It works well. There's always a bad apple. They took care of the bad apple. It was cleaned up. It was closed up. So to frighten people to stay away from Oak Park would be such a disservice. We have all kinds of people that live in our community and I'm very proud to say that we have people from all denominations, those who have respect for one another's religious beliefs and, and if they walk, I see them walking in Berkeley. I see them walking in Farmington Hills. Not just religious people, people. The weather has happened. We can come out. They're walking the dogs again. The men and women and husbands and wives are holding hands and walking. It's not because it's just one type of a person. We all begin to walk who physically can do those things. So let's not disguise what is really on the ballot. It is for a position to be placed so that people can go and sit down and have a lovely dinner or after-show theater snack and something to drink. Does it mean that we're going to have drunks? Of course not. It has been proven this year alone in just the beer and wine that was served at the, at Sahara and I have been a friend of theirs for a long, long, long time. I have never seen anything that has been disruptive. I go in, I carry out, I go in, I sit down, I bring my family and it's a lovely place to be. I certainly would never want anyone to assume that they were doing anything that was incorrect. So let's keep this a proud city, a vibrant city. It's time, we don't have any place to go anymore. Our children don't have any place to go anymore. It's time now that we look to the future. It is the year 2015. It's no longer 1954, ladies and gentlemen. Let's get going.
Thank you. Okay, last, last question and then we'll, or statement and then we'll.
Last question, I just wanted to say that you had mentioned earlier, Manager Tongue, that this was a privately-run petition drive and there's 29,000-some population. I don't know exactly how many voters are registered, but in 2012 and '13, over 4,300 signatures were collected, over 6,000 signatures were collected last summer. That tells you how many people in this city want a change. And, you know, for businesses to come to Oak Park, it takes financing and banks will not finance restaurants, just like we were turned down without a C-class license. They will not use tables and chairs as collateral. It's not enough.[1796.36] It's not enough. We were denied, and we have to self-fund everything we do in this city. Because we don't have a C-class license, banks turn us away because it's not enough. An oven, a grill, a fryer, and some chairs and tables is not enough collateral for them. They want something tangible to, to use as an asset. I don't own the building, and a lot of tenants in Oak Park don't own their buildings, so they have no assets, and that's what we need. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anything?
I don't really, I don't really have a whole lot more to add, but I did want to talk about one misconception possibly that there is out there on the, the church and school measurement issue. Now, I know the city of Oak Park has it built into their regulations for when, if somebody wants to get a license, you will not approve them, I'm taking it, if they're within 500 feet of a church or school. Okay. State law does say that you shall not be located within 500 feet of a church or school, but there is also in state law a waiver provision that could be issued by the commission. So I just wanted to make that, that abundantly clear, that it's, yes, state statute does prohibit, but there is a waiver provision.
So how would that work, I guess?
Well, because the city is going to have the first shot, basically. If you're not going, going to approve somebody based upon your standards, we're never going to get a resolution of approval, so it's not going to be an issue. If somebody were to fight the city in order, because of your standards and your 500-foot prohibition, that would be a civil matter between the parties, but.
Well, I guess what I was, you know, waiver, meaning that if there's a church or school nearby, and, you know, the school board or the, the congregation decides it's not a big deal for them, then that might be the grounds for this kind of waiver you're talking about.
Right, yeah. They can. If the church doesn't object, or the school doesn't object, then the commission will proceed. But if there is an objection from the church or school, then they would have a hearing, the church and the applicant would come in before the commission, and it would be up to the, to the applicant to show why issuance of the license would not be detrimental to the operations of the church or school.
Thank you for letting me find that. Thank you, guys, so much for joining us this evening. This concludes our Town Hall event. Don't forget to turn out to vote on May 5th, and thank you for coming this evening.